It is Monday, April 29th. It is 5:34. We will call the Finance Committee meeting of the Marion City Board of Education to order. Can you take the roll call, please?
Mr. Swanger.
You already got it. Present.
Mr. Guyer.
Here.
Okay. We will go next to item 2A, which is the five-year forecast. So, Ms. Guyer, I'm going to slide over here so we can actually see.
Yeah, slide over because I have all fun little things to show you on the screen. Tonight, I'm just going to go over the revenue part, which is, you know, there's a lot to it. So, here's an overview of the current year. Nice little chart to show that without state, the amount of state funding that we get, it's obviously considerable amount of our revenue. Our local taxes make up 18% and other revenue 5%. And other revenue is everything that doesn't fit into local taxes or state funding. So, our 78% state funding is very important to our district. So, for the forecast that I will be filing and presenting in May, the historical revenue change for the past four years, it's a negative for the projected for the next four years. We're going, you know, I'm projecting that we were having a 1.58% increase instead of a, you know, so that's kind of pulling out of the trend of the negatives. On the little chart to the right, there's kind of a breakdown of the categories that are in the forecast. So, you can just kind of, that does kind of give you an idea of where the increases are. And so, total average annual change is, you know, almost a million dollars where before it was a negative. So, all right. So, now we'll look at property taxes, and I know this is a little hard to see, but I'll, I can't even read the numbers on my screen. But you'll, this is the actual from 2017 to 2022. This is our tax valuations, and then it's estimated from '23 to '27, which impacts the, which is the years of the forecast. We have reappraisal for 2022, and so there was an 18% increase. So, that's $455 million is the number on 2022, a little over that. And then, then we'll have triennial update in 2025, and so I'm projecting another 6% increase there. That has been historically where other counties that are in different years, that's what they have been seeing is, you know, the larger increases, reappraisal, and then, you know, there's a smaller increase for the triennial update. At this point, we don't have any indication that the values aren't going to do anything but go up. That's just, they've been going up a lot. Although, we didn't see, in Marion County, didn't see the increases that some other counties had that had a future or, you know, that were reappraised in 2023. Those were significantly higher than what we had in Marion County. So, that's just, that's, so that's the estimates that I'm basing our local tax collections This is the collections, the actual dollars that we should collect based on those valuations. We're in the $8 to $9 million range for the length of the forecast. So, you know, based on the projections from the previous screen.
Is, is that assuming that everybody actually pays their taxes?
I'm coming to that.
Okay. Thanks.
I usually assume a 90% collection rate up to a 97, and I'll tell you why just in a minute. So, here's the collection data. So, when you look at it, if you look at that line that says gross collection rate, we're actually over 100% collections because of the delinquencies that are being collected. So, yes, we still have delinquencies, but we're not getting any farther behind. From, if you look 2020 to 2023, we had over 100% collections, and that's because of the delinquencies that have been collected. So, yes, we are in the whole, there are people that owe us money, but they are collecting. If you look at that across, because they get, when I get the breakdown of collections, it has, you know, separate line for delinquencies, so we know how much is, how much that is. So, you know, we're actually collecting 90, 90 to 91% of current build, but we're also, but then we're making up for it with 10% delinquencies collected to make about 100% of our collections, which I thought was a very interesting, you know, when we were, since we were talking about that.
Okay.
So, and, and then it's also that bottom line, the collection split, because this, we have, that impacts the forecast because the first half is in one fiscal year and second half is in another. So, we need, we have to watch that split to know how much to, to put in which year on our fiscal years for the forecast. So, I thought, I thought this was a, this one jumped out to me when I, when I was going through stuff, too. So, I thought, that's a, at least we're not getting any farther behind. They're collecting some, so. All right. Now, we'll move to state foundation funding. This is all of the different, this is what comes on my, I get a settlement sheet when we get money from the state, and these are all in the funding formula. These are all the different categories that there's a calculation that figures, makes up our funding as a whole. So, there's a lot of, a lot of different things that impact. Some of them are strictly enrollment-based, you know, like special education, that is, you know, we have a, our state share times what our special ed costs are depending on the disability. So, there's, so all of those different things have a, have a little component to them. I wanted to, I'll go over base cost, which obviously is the main thing. Did you have a question?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
What is targeted assistance?
That is, that's a calculation that has to do with your property tax values and your taxpayer's ability, ability to pay. So, we have low valuations compared to a lot of other districts, so we have higher targeted assistance from the state. There's a calculation that factors that, those things in.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So, the, I wanted to show the enrollment because every single one of those numbers, this number drives every single one of them, and that's our enrollment. And as you can see, we've been declining 2019 and through '24 is the current number this year. So, I am still, I'm projecting future declines because it would not even be, you know, it would be not correct, not a good estimate to project anything even or even to go higher at this point until, so I will continue to project decreases until we, you know, hopefully we see a turn and move up, and then that would change those, those projections. So, that impacts greatly, obviously, our state aid. So, I estimate it because the, the system, it, you know, it figures, it estimates how much, how many kindergarteners we're going to get, and then it pulls off the seniors, and so, and then I subtracted 50 from that to get my estimate. So, that's kind of where that is going for each year, just declining 50. Now, I really, really hope that we level off or go back up, but, you know, at this point, this is, this is our trend. And so, here's the, the formula for the base cost. So, you'll see the, on line B there, base cost enrollment, so that's the same thing basically from that previous slide. And so, then they figure out a per-people cost, and that's based on, you know, the state's formula and how much they're going to fund per people. And then, if you look at the bottom, D and E, that's the local share and state share of that $8,000 per people that they're giving us. So, because of our large state share, so they're giving, be giving us anywhere from 6,500 to 6,800 a student in the years. So, and this is also assuming that because the, the current funding formula is being phased in, and we are, we are almost there, so the next biennium, they are projecting, you know, that we'll be at 100%. So, that's figuring that in as well. So, this is just kind of another slide and shows the actual money that equates to those, those per-student dollars. So, across the bottom, yes, we're seeing increases in per-people funding, but because of our declining enrollment, we're kind, it's fairly flat across the bottom. So, like I said, if I, if we see something different next year at the beginning of the year, enrollment looks like it's, you know, maybe going to level off or whatever, then the October forecast, I'll adjust those enrollment estimates. But at this point, this is what I feel is the best way to go. So, all right. Another disadvantaged people impact aid, which is, you know, you can see, we get, on fiscal year '24, we're getting over $4 million in that, in that funding. So, but if you'll notice across on the bottom, that that number is going down, down, down. But our, our DPIA is the disadvantaged people impact aid. We are, our projected is staying at that 99%. So, the way this formula works, if you look in C, D, and E, the way the, the state calculates it, the projected statewide average is going up, and because they have, so they have, plug a ratio into that, and so, because the rest of the state is coming up, that makes our ratio go down. So, that's where, so, you know, over the course by 2028, that's, you know, $1.5 million less in DPIA funding than 2024, which is, it's really, that's, that's concerning to me that the way they figure this, and I'm hoping that that's something that they talk about in the next biennium to adjust that once they see that schools like us are losing money in this category because that's the last thing that we need because of our high, of our high-need students. So, this was one piece that I wanted to pull out, that the rest of them all kind of flow. This one is just a little bit different, and so, so when you look at the, when you look at the final forecast, you'll see the restricted funding line going down a little bit, and it's mostly due to this. So, here's a little chart. This is just, you know, total general fund, funding, revenue from '19 all the way to '28. So, we got a little, you know, little ups and downs, but the most striking thing is the big yellow there, state funding. That's our, that's what we have. So, you can see the other sources, you know, they're all little tiny pieces of the chart. If you look out in 2028, there's a tiny little orange slice at the top, and that's our renewal levy. So, it, that's the year it would have to be renewed, and we would just have one half, one half of the year on the renewal. So, that's the, that's that little tiny sliver on the last year in 2028. So, I'm almost done. I don't take very long.
But on, so, can you go back?
Sorry.
Yeah. Quick. So, on 2023, it's a tiny sliver, but up at the top, we have other sources. And on 2028, we don't have any other sources.
What's that?
If I'm looking at the, the bar graphs on the far left.
Oh.
So, even though it's a small chunk.
Yeah.
In 2023, we have some other sources, but we don't show any other sources in 2028.
Yeah. It's, it's just such a, I'm, honestly, I'm not sure. I'd have to look that up to see what that would be as the state share.
Okay.
I bet that is advances and transfers, advances in, and I, I, I do things differently than our past treasurer, so I, I don't generally do advances if I don't have to.
Okay.
So, I don't project any advances, so I bet that's what that is, because that would only be, yeah.
But I mean, that's, when we look at this and we look at our state funding versus our real estate, when we get to that 2028 and we have to ask for a renewal of the levy, I mean, I think we should let people know, like, the majority of our funding is coming from the state.
Right.
We're paying a small portion.
Right.
Compared to what other districts are paying.
Right.
And we can, we can use that as a way to.
Nevermind.
Enhance and leverage that to get the levy passed.
Right. I mean, and a renewal, so it doesn't change what they're, you know, what they're paying. And so, you can see in that, that, those numbers there, it's $927,000 is how much that renewal, half of that renewal is, so that it would impact 2028 by that much. And so, here's just the top part of a traditional five-year forecast. So, this, this is all those different numbers, and that's plugged into the forecast format. So, yeah, so you, I was right. The other financing sources, it was the advances in because I have none projected for future years. So, you know, see the property taxes, and so, if you look at 2028, though, on the top line, the property taxes, where I'm projecting that we're going to have an increase, but what the, what the forecast does is that renewal, it puts it down at the bottom of the forecast, so it's still figured in, but until that, until it's passed, it doesn't get added to the forecast. So, that, that number, you know, moving forward in the future forecast years, that will always see that, and there's a bottom section in the, in the five-year forecast that shows the renewal amount. So, that's split out. Public utility, personal property, that, you know, the pup taxes, those are pretty, pretty stable. You know, you see increases each year, and, and those are taxed at the full millage, the full approved millage, where on general property tax, we have, you know, the reduction factors, so we're at the 20.04. So, you know, so you see unrestricted grants and aid, that's like the base cost, and then restricted grants and aid are a lot of those extras that go in there. And as you can see on that restricted grants and aid, how it's declining, and that is mostly due to that DPIA that I talked about. State share of local property taxes is homestead and rollback that we get reimbursed from the state. So, and so those, that just goes as our property taxes go, just that percentage. Then all other revenue, I, I, this, this may change before I file my final forecast. I had it totally evaluated, all of those numbers, because we did, we are getting higher interest right now, which goes in that. You know, we got an extra year of medic, normally, we only get one year of settlement for Medicaid. We got two in this fiscal year, so that's, you know, that's close to, that's $800,000 or $900,000. So, that's a pretty good chunk where we only usually get the half of that in a year. So, that's only one that I didn't really, I haven't dug into a lot yet. So, that may change a little bit. So, these, this total revenue for '25 through '28 may change a little bit due to the all other operating revenue. I've pretty much got the rest of them where I want them, so. And I haven't finalized the expenditures, and that's why I didn't bring that to you yet either, because that, I'm even farther away from that one, so still working on that. So, any other, any other questions or any other comments? Anything else you need to know?
So, I don't have any questions on this, but I do have a question.
Sure.
Once, once we're done with this.
Okay.
Does anybody else have a?
No.
Anybody in the audience have any questions about this? Okay. So, my question is with our ESER money, because I know our ESER money must be spent by the end. Are we close to?
Yes.
Spending all of our money?
Yes.
And we're going to spend like all of it, all of it?
Every single penny. Yes.
Okay.
You notated that in your letter, your update, right?
Yeah. I did mention that in the update. Yeah. We are, we've got some things encumbered, some things still going on, you know, Chromebooks to buy and things like that, that Jake's been working real hard to spend the money. And, but the salaries that we have in there will finish out spending, so every bit of it.
I don't believe we give money back.
No.
We never give, we never give money back if we don't have to.
No. And especially with ESER because it's different than other federal funds, because other federal funds, you couldn't divert general fund expenditures to it. With ESER, you could. So, even if I was going to have a million dollars left over, I'd just move a million dollars in salaries and benefits over, because you could do that. But I'm not going to, I mean, what has been projected, we will definitely spend it all, and I shouldn't have to do any moving around. I'll just spend it and be done. So, yes. $10 million, it was $10 million this year, ESER, that we had to spend, so a little over.
I like spending other people's money.
I do, too. Now, the reporting on it's not done, but.
It is fun to spend somebody else's money rather than our own, so.
But they, they, they require a lot of oversight and reporting. I mean, you got to, like, for $10 million, you got to break it all down in little tiny pieces and to report, so that's fun, but I welcome in Veronica on that. She did a fantastic job of having all of that organized, every, all the budgeting set up, so all I've had, you know, had to go back and just kind of look at what she's done. Okay, this goes here, this goes here. You know, it takes time to match them up, but it's a lot easier than if she hadn't had all that work done. So, she did a fantastic job of staying organized with the ESER funds, so.
Good.
Any other comments, questions?
Thank you for that information.
Anybody else? Thank you, and thank you for putting it together in a format that is easy to understand and visually, visually appealing, so I like that, so thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I love the, because a lot of those charts that you saw in there, that's straight out of my work papers in, in the forecasting software, and there's, there's, there's so many. There's so many. There's, just for property taxes, I could probably give you 50 different graphs if I wanted to. I didn't do that to you, but, so it's just, there's so, you know, just going through and picking out which ones I thought would be meaningful, and expenditure is the same way. There's so much. So, it's a, there's a lot, and, you know, and that's where, if you have any questions you need to, want me to dig in, do anything specific, you know, some I may know off the top of my head, some I may not, and with this software, I can dig in down to a lot of detail, so we can, you know, it's, it's great for analysis and figuring out where we're spending the money and where, you know, where it's coming from and all of that, so.
Mr. Ratliff?
Okay. So, on revenue.
Yes.
The only way we can increase our revenue as a school district is by asking the taxpayer or, in your analysis, stop other students from going to other districts, right?
Yeah.
Because we know we have a larger group open enrolling elsewhere and not kind of staying home. So, those are our two options.
Yes.
Is there any other option that we have?
No.
Besides donations.
We could ask the state for more money.
Yeah.
I mean, if the state and their formula changed and were to give us more money.
Yeah. And I mean, they, you know, they have been phasing in the new funding formula, and they, the way the revenues have been coming in at the state, they expect to be able to 100% fund it in the next biennium. But that's not a, they're already, we're already at 67% of it, and it's, it's, that's not a lot, there's not a lot of increase there in that 23, so.
And I know you haven't done the expenditures.
I've been working on them, but yeah, there's a lot I still have to work through some details on.
Okay. Do you think we're far off at this point, or no?
No, I'm not too far off. I, the, what I really need to pinpoint is what from ESER is coming back to general fund. Now, salaries and benefits, I'm getting there, but that's, I need to do a little more work on that just to make sure. I'm in agreement with Olympia, I'm in agreement with the other, you know, departments that this, yes, we are keeping this program, no, we're not keeping this program, and those kinds of things.
And I know Ms. Swanger was joking because, about spending other people's money. We have tried to take care of the taxpayers' money as much as we can.
Oh, yes.
We just have a lot of needs, so you could keep sending money, and we would find.
Oh, we definitely.
Nice ways to use it, meaning we have upgraded buildings.
Yeah.
Furniture desks.
Yeah.
I know we were joking, but, you know.
Yes.
I was referring to spending the ESER money.
Yeah, for sure.
The ESER funds.
From the state.
Right. You know, because.
So, we don't have to spend.
Yeah. Upgraded buildings, furniture, computers, all of, all of those necessary things for the staff and students. Yep.
What, do you know, right now as we sit, how much, how much of the funds from like salaries and benefits are going to go back into general fund that we were paying in ESER?
Well, most.
Roughly?
I mean, most of the salaries and benefits, I think all of the salaries and benefits will be going. I don't, there may be a few positions that are not coming back, but that's what I still have to work on with, talk to Olympia and Julie about, you know, making sure we're in this, you know, I have meetings set up with Julie so we can work through those, you know, and what other staff that we, you know, losing, adding up, you know, we have to add the, for the, the new extracurricular department, you know, we adding those salaries, things like that.
And will that be next month, then, that you'll?
Yes. The whole, the whole forecast, you'll have, will have present for you to approve in May, because it has to be filed by the end of May. So, yeah, that's, that's my focus for May is to.
And I understand when, when Kathy talked about how much of the tax, we're collecting about 90% of the current tax.
Yes.
And I know you were very positive with saying, but that, that doesn't necessarily, we're not collecting 100%, so we're still falling 10% behind.
Well.
Every year, and we're just catching about 10% of the extra.
Right. Yeah. So, we're, we're not getting farther behind in delinquencies. We're kind, we're not catching up either.
Yes. I mean, we're kind of staying the same between what they're paying and how many delinquencies we have on a year-to-year basis.
Yes.
So, we haven't shown, for lack of a better word, significant improvement on the tax issue as of right now.
Right.
Okay. So, it'd be nice to collect at a 95-plus area. I think that's what we're all hoping for, but we just haven't seen it yet.
Right. But it's, if you go back, you know, I just showed a few years, but if you go back even farther, we're, here in this county, here in this district, we're pretty consistent around that 90%.
And our millage would be up in, I think she said, 2028?
Our renewal.
Yeah, renewal.
Yeah. That, 2027 is when we'll need to vote on that, I believe.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions or comments? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
You do.
I'll start then. We are adjourned at 6:03.
Good evening. I want to welcome you all to the April 29th, 2024 Regular Board of Education meeting. It's now 6:30. Before we get started tonight, unfortunately, we've had a couple passings in the Marion City Schools family, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, President Ratliff. I was informed since our last board meeting that we have two former employees who have passed away. The first one is Brenda Bird. She passed away on March 29th, 2024. She was a head cook, and they, one thing that people said over and over about her was her love for family and the students and staff that she worked with and served every day. She also worked a lot with our band students for many years, taking care of band uniforms. This person who sent this information said.
The first one is Brenda Burt. She passed away on March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four. She was a head cook and they, one thing that people said over and over about her was her love of family and the students and staff that she worked with and served every day. She also worked a lot with our band students for many years, taking care of band uniforms. This person who sent this information said, "My own boys said if they learned one thing from Mrs. Burt, it was how to properly hang up their band uniform and put it in their garment bag the correct way," so I wanna recognize Ms. Brenda Burt. And the second person is Deb Kenner Sanchez, who passed away on April eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. And she was a teacher and school counselor at Harding for years. And after retirement, she came back and helped supervise testing. She had a laugh that would have you laughing even if you didn't know what was funny. She was a gift to Harding and to the students, so just to recognize, a moment of silence for Deb Kenner Sanchez.
In honor of those two, we're gonna say the pledge and have twenty-five seconds of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Treasurer, could you pause the roll, please?
Mr. Ratliff?
Here.
Mr. Weidling?
Here.
Mrs. Dyer? Ms. Swanger?
Present.
Mr. Guyer?
Here.
First on the tonight's agenda is the superintendent's report, item A, is student achievements. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, President Ratliff. I'm actually going to call our athletic director, Mr. Sean Kearns, up to recognize our winter athletes.
Would you like to step forward, please? If you would, come on up front here and we'll face them, face everything. So we have here tonight five of our winter outstanding athletic performers. Uh, before I get started on the five that are here, I do wanna ma, mention Nathan Cunningham as well. Nate is unable to be here tonight because of a baseball game. Nate is a wrestler for us in the winter, a senior. He earned his one-hundredth win over this past winter, which is an amazing accomplishment for a wrestler, and then also he was a sixth-place finisher at the district meet. He was within seconds, literally seconds, of qualifying for the state meet, so a tough loss at the end, but a fine season and a fine career for Nate Cunningham. So here to, first in front of me, Marquise Long Jr. Marquise is a senior basketball player. For the second year in a row, he was first-team MOAC. Uh, he was also first-team District Eleven. A lot of people ask the question, what does that mean, District Eleven? Um, District Eleven is a collection of Division One schools in central Ohio. And it's, it's, um, to give you an idea of it, it's kinda all the schools that are around the outside of the outer belt. Uh, it's all the Olin Tangies, it's Delaware Hays, it is the Pickringtons, Newark, and all the schools out around that way. So if you know anything about basketball in central Ohio, you know the district final was Olin Tangies and Delaware Hays, so the two best teams are in our District Eleven. And in that district, Mark, Marquise was first-team, so an amazing accomplishment there, too. And then he was also honorable-mentioned Division One All-State for the second year in a row. Uh, Marquise was within what, I don't wanna say this, but I will anyway, within about nineteen points of a thousand in his career. Uh, he's also a standout football player, and he's gonna go and play football at Thomas Moore University, uh, just across the bridge from Cincinnati this fall. So congratulations, Marquise. Next up is Ridge Barclay. Uh, Ridge is a senior wrestler this winter for us. Uh, he also earned his one-hundredth win this past season over at Frederick Town. Um, he, uh, has had a fantastic career, obviously, in wrestling. Uh, he's been an all-conference performer multiple times. Uh, he was a sixth-place finisher also at districts, literally within seconds, also making it to the state wrestling meet Division One, which is very difficult to do. Um, Ridge is also a football player. Uh, he's also been a first-team MOAC member track. And he is going to wrestle at Mount Union next fall. Congratulations, Ridge. Uh, next is Sophie Holt. I think you've been, if you've been following the board meetings, uh, we've talked about our girls' wrestling program. Uh, last year, we had one girls' wrestler, that was Sophie. This year, we had a whole team of girls' wrestlers, and I think it's appropriate that Sophie, the first individual for us at Marion Harding High School to place at the regional meet, and she's only a sophomore. She had fourteen wins last year, twenty-two this year, uh, on her way to a fantastic career. Congrats, Sophie. Next up is Anaya Mitchell. Anaya is a junior here at Harding. Uh, Anaya was a first-team MOAC basketball player for us here this winter. Uh, she is already over eight hundred points as a junior. She was also recognized on the District Eleven Honorable Mention Squad. Uh, she is also honorable-mentioned All-State, Division One, and I'm trying to get her to run track, I haven't got that, got it done yet. She plays basketball all spring, but, but she's had a fine career already, and we're looking forward to next year. Congrats, Anaya. And finally tonight, Autumn Fitzgerald. Autumn is a senior, and she is here tonight because of gymnastics. She is a four-time state qualifier in the sport of gymnastics. Uh, she was the second-place finisher in the entire central Ohio district in the vault. Uh, she also qualified for state in the all-around this winter, uh, four straight years down in Columbus, is an amazing accomplishment. Um, there are some fantastic gymnasts down there, and she's one of them. Um, she also runs track here at Harding. She is a, has been a first-team MOAC track and field athlete as well. She's involved in that again this spring. And her plans are to go to the University of Kentucky next fall, so congratulations, Autumn. Congratulations again, everybody. Good job.
Thank you. Let's give them one more round of applause. Congratulations on your accomplishment. Um, I have one more award. Uh, this was actually awarded to Harding High School from the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce for the twenty-two, twenty-three, um, growth on the school report card. It is the Momentum Award of two thousand twenty-three, awarded to Harding High School, Marion City Schools, in recognition of significant improvement and growth and achievement in the Ohio School Report Cards for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So just wanna shout out Harding High School. All right, next we have some students from Benjamin Harrison, and I'm actually gonna call Principal Mike Panamarzick and one of our amazing teachers, Amy Garrison, up, and they're going to give us a little background, and then we're gonna have our students come up.
Well, thank you very much, the board, superintendent Olympia Delaforde, Assistant Superintendent Kevin Hayner, for giving us the opportunity to showcase one of the many amazing things we've got going on in our elementary this school year. Uh, the way we're gonna kinda do this is I'm gonna talk about how this project came to be. Uh, Mrs. Garrison's gonna talk about the process, and the most important part, the students are gonna present, so they're very excited, they're very anxious, but it just came natural. Other one day, Mrs. Garrison, we're having a conversation, I stopped in her classroom, and she was talking about really getting a project that would extend her students, really challenge her students, and, and be a real-world application. So we started thinking and brainstorming together back and forth, and I brought up our district's, you know, main, one of our main goals this year is to improve attendance, all levels, elementary, middle school, high school, and how our goal is to improve it from ninety-one point eight percent and ninety-two, five percent. And she kinda got thinking, well, maybe this is something our students could take ownership on. We know we're doing, as adults, these steps, and maybe they don't understand, like, the whole meaning behind that. So we got talking back and forth, and it was just all hands on deck. Mrs. Guyer, our ESP, was involved, uh, Brandy Halbert, our tech support for the district, was involved. Mrs. Garrison did a great job laying down some really good foundational questions. And the only thing they got promised from me was pizza for all and ice cream for the best project. But again, uh, some of the words, you know, we throw around, education, high engagement, real world, impactful, voice and choice, inquiry-based, all those great things, I got to see it firsthand. Uh, I could tell you, and I won't take the thunder from Amy, these students did not wanna stop their work. They were so engaged, they were so excited to learn.
I'm gonna thank you for allowing the students to come and show their work. It was very engaging for them. It was also real life, so it was a great experience for them. I did give them some guiding questions so that they would know what to research, um, what types of questions to look for to find their research. It was pretty eye-opening for them, I feel like. I gave them the freedom to create their presentation however they chose. Again, Brandy Halbert was amazing. She was there for us every time we worked on it. We kinda saved that for our Friday project, so it did take us a little bit longer. They were always excited to get started on it. This particular group did a really nice job finishing up their project that I challenged them farther and asked them to create an infographic, which is really difficult to summarize all of that information into simplistic infographics, and they did a really nice job with that. Once they created it, it was too large for us. The idea was we wanted to send something home to parents, so again, Brandy Halbert was amazing, and she helped create posters. So the same information that they're going to share with you on the video, they summarize into an infographic. We have these hanging in the school so that they get to see their work, other students get to see their work every day as they walk past. Additionally, another group of students created an infographic that we put sent home with parents, so this went home with, um, every child into homes to see what the students did and what they created, so it was a very great project for them. So if Liam and Aspen and Ryan could come up to share their project. So here we have Liam, and we have Aspen, and we have Rilover.
Question one, why is it important to have good attendance? E. Greenbush C. D. S. D. says, "Because regular attendance fosters a classroom community between teachers and children, students who attend school are more likely to succeed academically. Students gain background knowledge from discussions while learning in school. Attending school also provides time for social interactions with peers." Purdue University says regular attendance and punctuality are vital attributes, attributes for all employees. It is important for employees to attend work regularly and to arrive at work on time, because failure to do so determinately, to determinately affects employee moral and productivity. Question two, why does it matter if you miss one or two days a month? U.S. News and World Report says families should be careful about scattering. U.S. News and World Report says families should be also careful about scattering absences. Missing just two days a month can add up to chronic absenteeism by the end of the school year.
Question three, why does it matter if I am late to school? Camello Melion, Melion University says, "Because when students come to class late, it can disrupt the flow of a lecture or discussion, distract other students, impede learning, and genuinely erode class moral." Moreover, if left unchecked lateness can become chronic and spread throughout the class.
Question four, how does poor attendance affect my learning? Attendance, attendance work says, "Because poor attendance can influence whether children read proficiently by the end of third grade or be held back."
Question five, will having good attendance help me in later life? National Center for Education Statistics says, "Because poor attendance has serious implications for later outcomes as well. High school dropouts have been found to exhibit a history of negative behaviors, including, including high levels of absenteeism throughout their childhood."
Fun facts, is it? Rublo School District says, "Students who miss fewer days become better readers. Good attendance have, habits pay off. More school, more school days increase a child's academic success, improves their chances to earn a high school diploma and a college degree, so they can earn higher pay in their careers. Eighty percent of the, of success is showing up."
More fun facts, Department of Education and Workforce says, "Continued absences or failure to make progress toward implication of the absence intervention, intervention plan will result in the district filing a complaint with juvenile court." Can districts suspend or expel students for triancy, truancy? No, districts cannot suspend out of school or expel students for truancy.
More fun facts, according to Attendance, attendance and Chronic Absenteeism Literature Review, rates of chronic absenteeism na, nationally and in Minnesota, national data reflects the percent of students missing fifteen or more days in the two thousand fif, two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen school year. Minnesota data reflects the percent of students absent ten percent or more days in two thousand sixteen. Analo, analysis of national data had, sets have found that chronic absenteeism is similar across genders and in both urban and rural, rural schools. However, the economic status for the community is related to rates of absenteeism. School which the majority of students, seventy-five percent or more, live in poverty and are more likely to experience high levels of chronic, chronic absenteeism is clearly a national. and are more likely to experience high levels of chronic absenteeism is clearly a national issue that cuts across urban city and demographic groups.
According to Marion City Schools amended substitutes, Bill three hundred twenty-one, the Missing Child Act, the Board of Education of each school district shall adopt a written policy with respect to the notifications of a student's parents, guardian, legal custodian, or other person responsible for him when the student is absent from school.
According to NCES dot ed dot gov, poor attendance has serious implications for later outcomes as well. High school dropouts have been found to exhibit a history of negative behaviors, including high levels of absenteeism throughout their childhood at a higher rate than high school graduates.
S.D. Department of Education says, a student who misses ten days is twenty-five percent less likely to enroll in college. Students who attend school regularly are more likely to graduate and find good jobs. Talk with parents to share the value of good attendance and let them know how you are there to help.
Now these next three slides are going, oh. Now these next three slides are going to show why we think chronic absenteeism is key or attendance is key.
I have good attendance because I believe that having good attendance kind of matters because if I don't come to school certain amount of days, I might get held back and I might not meet the grade level or I might have to go to summer school.
I have good attendance because I want to keep myself in line. I want to keep learning. I do not want to get held back from learning new things in my life. I want to move on in grades.
I have good attendance because I want to advance in math and learn how to advance more in geometry. But if I don't come to school, then I won't be able to succeed in doing so.
Yeah, just to say how impactful it was just for not only the classroom, but the students, these students and along with some several others from Ms. Garrison's classroom on the announcements and did their presentations. And from directly after that, that goes into circle time. So these conversations are happening with the students. They're coming up to me in the hallway, giving me statistics. So Ms. Garrison, awesome job. And applause to these guys for their bravery coming up here tonight.
All right, if we could give them one more round of applause. Thank you. Yes. All right, I will move into my district update. We have summer school still out for registration. So if we have families out there that are listening and you would like to register your child for summer school, we still have plenty of spots available. We are running a waitlist for our preschool camp now. We had ninety slots and all ninety of those are filled at this time. But if you're interested, we still want you to sign up because there are some people that may not be able to attend. So if you have a pre-K student out there and want to sign them up for pre-K camp, please still do so. But if we have parents out there, we have summer programming for all students at every grade level. So please, you can call your school office and they can get you signed up for, get your child signed up for summer school. I also wanted to give a quick update on the OTSCIF grant. We do have the architectural drawings back, which have been shared with all of you. And I actually received emails today from Representative Richardson and Senator Reinecke to set up an appointment. So I'm gonna work with Board Member Swanger to go and talk about our plans and our project. Also, just for the public, we have wrapped up our strategic planning. We had our core committee. We had about fifty people that participated on that committee and we met four times beginning in January. So our next steps will be working to with OSBA to finalize that plan and bring that in front of the board with the mission and the vision and the core values and goals for the district. Also, we are in full swing for Ohio State testing. So we've been testing at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. We are really doing a push this year to have participation rates, try to get everybody tested so that obviously we can see where they're at on that scale and just want to thank our staff because this is the time of year when everybody's getting a little bit weary and taxing and our staff have just been really great at just being flexible to make sure that our students have those testing environments that we know that they need to have. We also are still hiring. We really need bus drivers. So if there are people out there that are interested in becoming a bus driver with Marion City Schools, please contact us or go to our website. We are constantly looking for to improve and increase our bus driver crew. We have received three grants since the last board meeting. We have received the Drive to Succeed grant in the amount of thirty-seven thousand six hundred dollars. This actually allows us to do driver's ed for our students. It pays for the online. They have a twenty-four hour session that they have to take. It also pays for their driving classes. We partnered with Elite Driving School here in Marion. So those students will actually be able to get that right here in Marion and it will be free of charge. So it is a financial burden, over five hundred dollars to get your license now to take those classes. So we will be rolling out information about that for how students can apply for that Drive to Succeed. We also received from the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, the State Personnel Development Grant in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. And that is going to support us with our staff on our MTSS, our multi-tiered support system. We are permitted to use those funds for staff development and materials and we will receive support from the ODU in that work that we're doing. And we also received a grant for our summer food program, the No Kid Hungry Grant. I didn't write down the exact amount, but it's over five thousand dollars that will help us with materials that we need to get for our summer food grant. So we are extremely thankful for those grant opportunities and just wanted to share that publicly. Last but not least, as I mentioned before, we're at end of year activities. So we have lots of things that are happening. So we encourage and invite board members to come out to some of those. We've got literacy nights. We've got end of year carnivals, the field days, a lot of concerts that are happening. And then culminating, our last day of school, I think I said this before, is going to be on Friday, May twenty-fourth for all students. And we have our graduation scheduled for Sunday, May nineteenth at twelve o'clock, which will be held at Grant Stadium. And in the event that we have to relocate for a rain site, we will hold it here at Harding High School in the gym. And as in years past, our graduation event will also be livestreamed. And I met with the team today. We had a scheduled meeting and we do have a website webpage set up at the Harding High School webpage called twenty-four, twenty twenty-four graduation where we will just continue to update so that parents can get the information that they need with some frequently asked questions. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
So. Are we moving on or can I ask a question? Okay. So the ninety slots for pre-K or that are filled, are they Marion City Schools kids? Are we holding that accountability as far as just our kids and we're not letting, and the kids on the waiting list the same?
I don't know who's on the waiting list, but we serve as our kids.
Okay. And then for the summer food grant, it's just materials that, does that include any employment? Or are we paying for personnel or is just for?
We have another grant. I don't know what it's called.
Well, we have the summer food that we get funding from the federal government for. That's, that funds most of it. This is just an extra five thousand dollars.
It's like extra to support the program, but it's outlined what we can use the things for. I believe it might be like marketing and other supplies that we won't have to take out of our budget. We can use the grant for those things.
Then we hire people to run the?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep. Also, I just want to say thanks. She had mentioned securing meetings with our elected officials. Our state Senator Bill Reinecke and Tracy Richardson, our state representative. I believe Dr. Davis, Mark Davis, County Commissioner, had something to do with that. I think he was making calls on our behalf. So I appreciate that in setting those up. Item four on the agenda is Assistant Superintendent's report. Mr. Assistant Superintendent.
Mr. President, thank you. At the request of our Board Vice President Wibbling, our partners from RFS will share about the services that are provided for our students. RFS focuses on behavioral and mental health services in collaboration with the school. Our partnership began with them in spring of twenty twenty-three. Next year, we will expand RFS services to McKinley and to George Washington. Board, please welcome Kerry Sarabia. I hope I said that correctly or I messed it up. CEO and President of RFS.
Good evening. I was gonna say good afternoon. Good evening. I'm honored to be here. Thank you for the invite. As I said, my name is Kerry Sarabia and I'm the CEO and founder of RFS Behavior Health. Before I get started, I want to thank Kathy and her team. We've been working together fabulously and we're obviously, as you said, we're now moving into three schools. I created a PowerPoint for today's meeting. I think unfortunately for me, my PowerPoint doesn't compare to the PowerPoint that we just saw earlier. But I will do my best to get through it today. So if you want to hit the next slide, we can go over there. So again, I'm, RFS Behavior Health is located out of Toledo, Ohio, and we were established in twenty twelve. I have personally have over eighteen years of experience with working with school districts and school-based services. I actually started school-based services in Toledo. And we say serving our communities since twenty twelve. I want to be very clear about that. Even though we're based out of Toledo, wherever we go and what school districts we work with, we want to be very intentional about being a part of the communities that we serve. We don't want to be an implant. We want to be a part of the communities that we serve. We want to work together with the school districts. We want to hire local people. We want to put people in places that are going to make a difference and impact the schools and the communities that we serve. You go to the next slide. Who we are. Basically, in a nutshell, we specialize in the development or implementation of education and mental health. That's all that we do as a behavior health organization. We, that's our straight focus. We don't have a lot of services. We focus strictly through K through twelve. We do work with the Next Step Program, which is eighteen to twenty-one, helping kids succeed after graduation. We proudly now serve Toledo Public Schools, Savannah City Schools, Marion, Bucyrus, Winford, Defiance, Ayersville, Fairview, Delta, Evergreen, Fayette, Swatton, Cardinal Stritch High School, and six of Fusion Education charter schools throughout the Ohio. Where we proudly serve, I think it's a number of total school buildings is seventy-eight. And obviously that many school districts, we annually serve around three thousand clients a year. You can go to the next slide, please. Okay, I promise I did not tell the person to put my picture on this. So I would not have told them that, but they did it anyways. Anyway, so we're a locally owned nonprofit behavior health organization. I'm proud to say that. I'll get on my soapbox for a couple of seconds. We are not big business behavior health. I am proud to say that. I came from big business behavior health, which is why I stepped out on a leap of faith and started my own organization, not knowing where it was going to go. We don't have a lot of the bureaucracies or anything else or the red tape that we have with other organizations. So we're locally owned, where, you know, we are, I'd say a mid-sized organization. We have a hundred and sixty employees. So we're very proud of the fact of being locally owned and not being a part of big business. And our mission is very simple, to ensure every student has access to health services and support to achieve positive educational outcomes. You can go to the next slide. Different by design is one of our, is one of our mantras, a holistic approach. Again, I'm a big believer, it takes a village. At RFS, we have a true care coordination model. It's not just about us providing the service. It's about us providing the service in conjunction with the teacher, the school counselor, the principals, other community stakeholders. We do believe that we're, we live, we're in a kind of a part of our society right now where a lot of people believe that behavior health services is the be all to end all. It's not, right? We're just one piece of the puzzle. And everyone else in this room and the educational ecosystem plays a huge part in that. So we want to make sure that when we're in the school buildings, we're sharing vital information such as the progress of the child, the lack of progress of the child. One of the biggest things that we are an asset to the schools are, is that we call it the bridge between the home and school. Our services just don't focus on the school day. We are in the homes. We are talking to parents. We are working with families. We are working with the issues that are going on in the family. As we all know as educators, that a lot of stuff that we deal with in the classrooms are stemming from what's going on in the home. Real-time intervention is imperative. As some of you know who've had experience with organizations, we don't have appointments. When a child who's our client during the school day is having a mental health issue or having issues or behavior issues, we are able to intervene in real time. There's no appointments. There's no drive times. What this does for parents, it increases access, decreases barriers. You know, obviously, we take for granted a lot of times that parents have transportation, that parents can do different things at four or five o'clock in the afternoon with, when they have other family members in the family. So we provide that real-time intervention. Relationships. I'm huge on relationships. I don't believe that we can be as effective as we possibly can unless we develop truly therapeutic relationships, not only with our stakeholders, but with the people, the clients that we serve. And innovation, you know, we pride ourselves on that. One of the things is summer is, summer is obviously right around the corner for us with the school year ending. We want to be innovative with our services. We just don't want the typical behavior health services. We want to expose our kids to as much diversity and opportunity as possible within our services. A lot of times in a lot of our communities, we take kids to the park. We have bike clubs. We have walking clubs. We have art clubs. We have yoga. We have all these things. And we incorporate our services around all these activities. Next slide. Our services, mental health SUD assessments, day treatment, CPST, TBS, special education program. In Toledo, we work with the only separate facility school, Westfield, in Toledo Public Schools, where that is a one to ten racial. We have a specifically special education trained staff that work inside the classrooms in conjunction with the parent and the teacher. We're trained in TFCT, psychiatric and health. This is kind of backwards. Solution-focused therapy is one of our, two of our main modalities. The psychiatric services are provided by an organization called I Am Balance out of Columbus. We have a longstanding partnership with them throughout the years. So we figured as we got closer to this, that would be our next closest avenue to make sure that kids can get medication, see psych, have psychiatry services. Individual group therapy, family stabilization, court advocacy, SUD services, which stands for substance use disorder. Summer program and after-school program. You go to the next slide, please. Proud to say some of our educational initiatives that we've been able to successfully initiate. inside our schools, a separate facility program, as I mentioned before. We have a highly intensive program for students who attend TPS separate facility schools. We have a mainstream special education program if you're not in a separate facility school. We also work with the sped classrooms inside those schools, again, with a one to ten ratio. Reintegration program, this is something that we are very, very proud of and we are actually still building out with Toledo Public Schools. So as of right now, we started this last, this initiative last year, so going into this year was our first full year. So what we do is every single student in Toledo Public Schools, high school, that is expelled anywhere from eleven to eighty-eight days, comes into our facility. They're actually bused by Toledo Public Schools into our facility and while they're there with us, they're, obviously, we're doing a restorative justice model, we use the seven mindset evidence-based curriculum. And what we're working on right now, which is a lot of moving the pieces, I'm sure some of you guys can imagine, especially working with some of the CBA wording, is that we're trying to add the educational piece to it, right? Because at the end of the day, if you have a student who's expelled for eighty-eight days, it's kind of, you know, they're already coming back to school and they're already probably failed for the school year, right? So then what we're doing is we're repopulating those, that school with the same kid, with the same behavior, so we're really excited about this program. I can tell you that year-to-date, we've had about two hundred and seventy-three kids go through this program and we've had less than ten kids reoffend to get resuspended or reexpelled. So the program is, was showing a high efficacy, so that's, that's something that we've created this year. Universal mental health screeners, not only I am in full collaboration with Dr. Wood from the University of Toledo, we implemented universal mental health screeners, started off with Toledo Public Schools, we now work, put those in Savannah City Schools as well as Swatton Local Schools and next year also going to Evergreen. This is comprehensive universal mental health screeners, which means the whole entire school was screened twice a year, right? We're looking for anxiety, depression. I can tell you at some of our schools in Toledo and in Swatton, we have increased our census just from the screeners alone, up to over two hundred clients, up to two hundred students in the schools. And that's just by being able to early identify a kid who's in, who may need mental health services. I think that it's fair to say in the educational ecosystem, which is right, wrong, or indifferent, is that who is the kid that mostly gets the service, that gets the attention, right? The externalizer, the tier-three kid, the tier-one, the tier-two kid who's quiet, gets good grades, comes to school, kind of gets bypassed, right? Which was interesting when we populated the data on this, was that the majority of the kids who were in need of attention and services from the screeners were kids who were not in truancy, not in academic failure, not had any type of discipline, right? And that was, and that was not something that was new to us, we knew we were going to see that, but it was, it was a lot of information with the educators because again, what we look at from a different perspective of who may need services and who don't need services. So we're very proud of that initiative, that initiative continues to expand through Northwest Ohio. And then the last one is I'm working with Kathy and her team right now, is that we work directly with the school districts, IT teams. What we've done in other school districts is that we tag our students into their system and what we ask for is daily attendance, suspension, referrals, academics, graduation rates, grade promotion. And what we do is we populate that data because we believe at RFS, if we're providing the appropriate interventions and our services are working and we're having efficacy with our services, we should, we should see increases in academics, we should see increase with grade promotion, we should start seeing decreases in suspensions and referrals and expulsions and so forth and so forth. For the most part, we have seen that. On top of that, we like to take that data and look at our clinical outcomes, the ACIS and other skills that we use to see how they're meshing together, so we're really proud of that initiative as well. You can go to the next slide, please. Why it makes sense, RFS aims to address environmental generational factors impacting educational outcomes by offering real-time interventions without any waitlist. I think I was just speaking that to some of the board members earlier, we have seventy-five kids, being close to eighty kids already in the short year that we've been here with Marion. I was talking to Michelle Fowles from McKinley last week, she gave us a lot of kudos on our process of getting kids into intake. She says by the time they make the referral, sometimes by the time she follows up, the kids have already been in service. So we're, we're very quick about that, we're very intentional about making sure there's no waitlist, excuse me. School service is safe and easily accessible venues for students accessing mental health services. School-based service, I think we can all agree, again, the schools are the most easy and accessible way to reach the kids and to provide that support with, in conjunction with the schools that we serve. The program ensures that students receive the necessary supports to prevent health issues from affecting their learning, fostering equal access for all students. You can go to the next slide, please. There you go, look. So that's, that's the end of this, end of this, end of the presentation. I'm not sure if I, if you guys ask, have questions, I'm not sure if that's, you know, if that's the process.
Yeah, I've got a few, and first of all, again, thanks for coming down. Just clarification, when you say that, obviously, one of your values and the principles you have is you want to become part of the community, not just to be an outsider. And you had mentioned briefly in terms of hiring local people, how does that work within RFS then?
So how we hire here?
Yeah.
So we, we go through indeed and then obviously we put in the demographic here that we want to. We've had one, we have one worker here that is, was from the Marion, from the Marion community, and then most of our people are here or live in this area. So we, we kind of cast a net probably within, I'm assuming, yeah, yeah. If I didn't blame Kathy because I specifically asked her, no. But we cast a net around very close to this area.
Okay, and then also, if it's possible, are you able to describe a typical day for an RFS employee who's been with Marion City Schools? I know that's a general question, but.
It is, and every day is different. I would say we, our day is kind of reflective as the educators, we don't know what we're going to get when we come in that morning. If we have built the appropriate relationships with our, with our parents, a lot of the times, we already know when the kid's already triggered before he even walks in that door because the parents have contacted us, right? If we're, if we're following our school protocol, and I always say if, because we have what our staff are supposed to do, but if our staff are monitoring what we call an assessment of needs while they're greeting kids at the doors and they see who's crying, they see who's mad, they see who's throwing their book back, and they're our clients, those are all the times that we can provide that early intervention. What we don't want, we don't want kids coming into school already angry, upset, being triggered and being removed from the classroom. As we know, part of our job is working in the schools, is to keep the kids in the classroom so they, making sure they're being educated. A lot of times, we're working as, if a kid gets removed from classroom for a behavior and they're our client, whatever that school process is, they could go to the assistant principal, the school counselor, the school social worker. If they, after they do their intervention, if they feel that kid needs a longer timeout, they feel that kid needs, you know, go speak to somebody else, they will pass them along to us. If all the stars in the skies and the moon line up and everyone's good, then we do what we call clear collateral contacts, we're calling parents, we're talking to teachers, we're speaking to school counselors, we're speaking to principals, getting any additional information on that student and what's going on. As you, as you know, I mentioned environmental generational factors. A lot of these kids are coming from those backgrounds that unfortunately they can't control, so making sure that their life is just like ours, it's always churning. So something always knew was coming up and obviously if we can get that information prior to, you know, being triggered, it's better off for the kid in the school.
So this is an all-day, every-day?
All-day, every-day, after school, seven days a week, emergency crisis, we go all year round, we don't take summers off, school breaks, the whole nine yards.
Okay, just add two more things, and you had mentioned the focus on if a student has been suspended for long periods of time. You mentioned the innovation that your company is doing to make sure that the education aspect of that doesn't get lost. Is there anything else right now that you and your team are working on that makes you different? That's what I really wanted to, you know, why RFS, what makes you the best of what you do?
It's a loaded question. I would say what makes us the best at what we do is number one, that's our pure focus, right? That's the only thing that we do, you know, I said, I can get on my soapbox, a lot of organizations, a lot of organizations do a whole lot of. I'm a big believer in you're a jack of all trades but a master of none, right? School-based services is our business, it's our job to know educational processes, it's our job to understand the educational ecosystem, it's our job to understand what teachers go through, it's our job to understand how we work hand-in-hand with the schools that we serve. It's our job to implement our clinical processes within the school day, how do we operate, how do we function, what's the most appropriate for the school? You know, one of the things that we talk about all the time when I first met Kathy and every time that we go into a new school, I always want to meet with the team, it's not my way of doing things. I have to meet with the school to understand what are your needs, what are your barriers, what are you seeing, are you seeing behaviors, are you seeing true mental health issues, what's the background of your school, right? And I need to get their feedback, what do they want to see from us? Once we collect that information, then we build that program around that school and how we can work together. And to be honest with you, Scott, I think that's one of the biggest things is because a lot of organizations operate is, this is what we do, this is how we're going to operate, this is our model, and this is what you have to accept. And that's not how we operate, right? We want to truly be great community partners with our schools and make the biggest impact that we can. And I think, lastly, I think for me, even though I'm the CEO only by title, right? I am, I'm accessible twenty-four-seven hours, twenty-four-seven a week, a day, whatever, year. If there's something going on, I can be reached, I'll be here, whatever it needs from me, I'll make sure it works, I want them to understand that's important for me and our relationship builds.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. How, you had mentioned you have your staff greeting students as they come in to try to see maybe a kid that's having a bad day or coming from home and the school is already malfunctioning, I guess, like he's already at his limit, right? Or her limit. How do most of our kids get to RFS? Is it a teacher referral, is it a home referral? Is that?
So our referral process?
Come on. I'm getting trained here.
Our referral process goes through our building administrators or our building ESPs or school counselors. Because the reason why we do not open it up to teachers, which is a model that RFS has, is we want to make sure that the people in the building who work on those things every day can determine if that is just, they need a referral to a community resource or they truly need a referral for mental health services.
Because I'm, I'm just thinking, obviously, as a parent, you might know before anyone else, as he's indicated, so can parents then call the principal to say, hey, I think?
Absolutely, if, we have had many incidents where a parent will call and say, hey, there's been a big change in our family, is there extra help for my student? And then we're able to do the referral from that.
Great.
And Rocket, to your question, it hasn't happened here yet, but in other counties of a parent, a friend of a friend says, hey, I'm, my child's in services with this organization. If the, if the parent then tells that parent who we are and they contact us outside of school through us, we would process that referral and then we would tell the school counselor, whoever our point of contact was, that we was contacted on the outside of school and this is what was going on.
And I'm taking it, we're trying to preliminarily provide services, you're kind of, when it gets beyond what we can provide, you're more of a mental health specialist agency that goes beyond what we can provide.
Absolutely, and I would look at it as an additional layer of support. We are never the process, we are never the first process, the first step in the process of anything that happens during the school day. It's for Marion City Schools, staff and their professionals and the process that you guys have put in play, your social workers, your intervention, your intervention specialists, your teachers, to go through that process first and then they identify how much more time this kid needs, you know, to have to be able to get back in the classroom and effectively be taught.
And that would obviously be the goal, was after RFS, the kid gets reintegrated back into normalcy for that student.
Yep, absolutely, that's always our goal, is to return the kid back to classroom so he can function throughout the day.
Correct, thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to just make a comment and say thank you. I definitely have seen the difference between last year and this year in the work that RFS is doing. I think one of the things that I do appreciate is that community piece and it's not like you're just a separate entity that's in the buildings, it's integrated. And I've received positive feedback from the staff in those buildings. I was just at McKinley today and they were extremely excited about, you know, that expansion. I know GW is too, so just want to thank you because I know it was a while ago, we were talking about your services and planning out and when you start to see it come to fruition and you see that it's actually helping kids, it's helping our school environment. So I just wanted to say thank you for coming to Marion and helping our students and families and staff, helping everybody.
Thank you for having us, I truly appreciate the comments. Yes, ma'am.
So if we, we are, you are in three schools now, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Do we have a plan to expand that into all of our schools? I mean, if it's beneficial and it's helpful for students, what is the plan to bring this to everybody?
I would say as slow as possible.
We have been very intentional in the schools that we've been selecting, so for the past four years, we've been collecting data on our mental health referrals and which schools have the numbers to support because they have to be able to pay their staff and so for that, we have to have enough students to be able to, that we receive referrals on, to be able to support a staff person in that building full-time, to have an adequate caseload. So we have grown slowly, but strongly, I believe, in the buildings that we have chosen. I know that we have discussed the next step plans on which buildings would be appropriate to move towards next, and so that is a continuous conversation.
And I would just add too, I would just add too, is like when, what piggyback off what Kathy said, it's not a surprise that in even the educational world and our social service world, there's a shortage of workers, right? So moving as slowly as possible, securing the right people, I mean, Kathy and I, for example, every time I have an application for Marion, I send it to her, right? Do you know this person? Was they a part of Marion City Schools? Like, so we're vetting the people to make sure that we're not recycling staff, we're not, you know, making sure we're not putting people in the building that we may not be sure of who are going to stay. So we're trying to be very intentional and then I also believe as, you know, RFS is still the new, you know, the new agency in town, so a lot of people don't have the name recognition yet, so I think as we continue to build that and people know that we're a fixture here, I think we'll continue to see an uptick in resumes and everything else. We're not doing bad now, but I think again, with just where we are now with, with the workforce, it's, it's hard. We want to make sure that we put the right people in place and we don't want that, we don't want a revolving door in our schools with staff.
What's, what three things he's in Taft?
McKinley and we'll expand to George Washington next year.
Great, great. And just so everyone knows, he was a referral for us from Harding graduate Ryan Murphy, class of ninety-two, who's the assistant Toledo Public School Superintendent. We were having a conversation, I said, what are you guys doing for behaviors? Because we just had the teachers come in and kind of say they're having a lot of behavioral issues and he referred us to RFS and that's, I think, how they came to be in Marion, is because a former graduate had referred him to us, so appreciate you being here, Ryan, everything you do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Appreciate it.
Item five on the agenda is the Treasurers Report. First item A is the approval of the board minutes, looks like from the March fourth, the March eleventh and March twenty-sixth meetings, you'll have a motion. So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wybbling?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr., oh, sorry, Mrs. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratler?
Yes. Those meetings are approved. Item B, the financial approvals, this would be the monthly financial report from March twenty-fourth, the fund balances on March, from March twenty-twenty-four and the checks from March twenty-twenty-four.
from March 2024, and the checks from March 2024. I think I said March 24th, but it's the monthly financial report from March 2024.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Item C is donations. The treasurer recommends the approval of the following donations. $100 for T-shirts for all City 4th Grade Choir from former board member Kelly McKay. $450 for T-shirts for all City 4th Grade Choir from former board member Ted McKinnis. $100 for HHS Silent Film Trip from Margaret White. $40 from the HHS Harding Herald from Sarah Wingard. Two separate $20 donations. $100 from HHS Silent Film Trip from Poodle Seven Things DBS Birchtree Bookery. $300 from HHS Silent Film Trip for BH, from the BHEPTO. $100 from the HHS Silent Film Trip from Sherry Kuhn. $75 from HHS Silent Film Trip from 740 Group LLC. $100 from HHS Silent Film Trip from Suites of Lenworth Salon and Spa. $100 for HHS Silent Film Trip from Tara White. $40 for HHS Harding Herald from Alexi Sadi. $10 from HHS Harding Herald from Sherman Hart. And $250 from the HHS Silent Film Trip from Marion Education Association. And a motion to approve that acceptance.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll?
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. And thank you to all those who donated as that makes those endeavors happen. Now we're to item six, hearing of the public. This is the public participation at the board meetings. Obviously, the Board of Education recognizes the value of school governance, of public comment on educational issues, and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public participation is a time set aside for the board to listen to public comments, but it's not intended as a time for dialogue. The board offers public participation to members of the public in accordance with the procedures below. The board applies these procedures to all speakers and does not discriminate based on the identity of speaker, content of speech, or viewpoint of the speaker. We have, I believe, three individuals that have asked to speak tonight. And the first one would be Evelyn Lyszewski. Sorry, can't read that very well.
Good evening. So my name is Evelyn Lyszewski. And I started being, I became Marion City School when my oldest started his freshman year. Last year, I have three in Harding. And next year, I'll have only one because the other two already graduated. I'm one of the parents who donate their time, donate their gas, donate, donate their, my, for my own money when we need to take kids to tennis match or any event. When some of the directors ask for snacks or something like that, I'm there as a parent, helping the school. And I have, I'm a family of six. And I know families, speak Spanish families, they have also large numbers. And by the, from the report saying that the Plan B for the graduation, if it's, if it rains, they said that the graduation is going to be whole in the auditorium, the gym. Well, I think that not only my kids, but all the seniors deserve the best. And they, I don't think that the school have to try to just save money and try to make those families uncomfortable, I think, because they have to choose on being live to see your child or your family member graduate. Or just be in another room and watch your child or your family member graduate in front of TV. I don't think they deserve that just because the school wants to save money. Because I know that, you know, if they don't use the Coliseum, because that was, there's always been like that, you know? If they don't do it in the green, they don't do the graduation in green, then they go to the Coliseum. And my understanding is that, so they, so for the school to save money, they're going to use Harding Gym. And that's, it's a smaller place. Families have to, will have to choose who's going to be their life or who's going to be in the other room watching their TV, watching their kids, other family members graduating in the TV. And I think not only my kids, but all the seniors don't limit their effort, they don't limit their academic skills, they don't limit their dedication to represent the school. Because when they do something, like when they go to, you know, I have kids in chalk wire, have kids on the marching band, I have kids in swimming, I have my kids playing tennis. They'll do their best. They give a hundred percent. And I don't think the school have to limit, you know, their budget so they can just save money. I don't think, I don't think that's, that's, I don't agree with that. So I just, just want to share that with you. And it's not just my kids or my family. I know there's other families too that, that have the same. Thank you.
And just to clarify, we're talking about the Plan B.
For the graduation.
You're okay with Plan A?
Yeah, it's in green. I mean, it's nice weather. I mean, there's a lot of room and we can be there live, you know? So, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker is Chris Weidling.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Chris Weidling and I too am a Harding parent of a 2024 graduating senior. Very proud of that as well. While I understand the fiduciary and the fiscal responsibility the Marion City Schools has when it comes to budgeting and planning, having the thought of losing the deposit for the use of the Coliseum be the topic at the beginning of the school year seems irresponsible. I have seen Marion City Schools spend money on special committees, strategic planning sessions, and property leases that weren't necessary and far more costly to the district. Graduation planning shouldn't be a budget issue. I know that Marion City Schools believes in diversity, equity, and inclusion in all respects. Therefore, how would a limited ticket number system seating and seating capacity support that core value? How would you determine who would be in the overflow, having to watch their family member child or a loved one wa, watch their graduation on television from the cafeteria? I understand that all of this may be for nothing this year because hopefully the weather does cooperate. However, if the contingency plan comes to be, how are you as administrators going to accommodate those who fall under the persons with disability category? What about the guests who need Americans with Disability Act assistance? Those who need the use of ramps, handicap seating, and et cetera? This is why in the past, the Coliseum worked. Those who had special needs could utilize floor space at the Coliseum or while at Grant Stadium, they could line up along the fence in the fields. Many people in this community use wheelchairs, motorized scooters, or other forms of assistance, and the gym just does not feel inclusive. Who will be monitoring this ticket system? Who will act as security for those who have a hard time accepting that the seating capacity is reached and they will now have to go into the auxiliary location to watch on TV? I understand that the gym may hold 1,500 people in theory and on paper. However, logistically, it makes no sense. The balcony will be used in full by the band and choir, which I assume is around 200 children. The floor space will be used by the graduating class. As of right now, it's down to 204, started at 210. Board members, staff, and administrators, so possibly another 300. 500 of that 1,500 is already accounted for. You don't have a plan for a Plan B, only an idea. And we've always been told failing to plan is a plan to fail. The fact that the Coliseum wasn't rented at the beginning out of fear that there won't be a 90-day turnaround to cancel the deposit is unrealistic. We shouldn't have to worry about a Plan A and a Plan B. And all I've been told is that the reason why we're using the gym as the secondary plan is because the pictures are prettier at the stadium. And those were the words of the principal of Harding High School. The pictures are prettier. Not that everyone who is attending this event gets a front row seat, but that the pictures would be prettier unless it rains. I just ask that going forward, as I know it's not going to do anything now since the Coliseum has already been used by somebody else on May 19th, but put these kids front and center and their families as this may be the only time they get to have such a monumental event. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jamie Rollins.
Hello. Today, I'm speaking as a mom to my son, Carter, a role I should wear more often for Marion City, but I often don't. Last week, when I saw on Facebook the time change from a 2:00 PM ceremony on a Sunday was moved to noon, I did what I was supposed to do. I spoke to my building principal. And when I questioned, who are the stakeholders? Did we ask parents? Did we ask Marion community members? I was basically told I didn't, he didn't need to ask my opinion. It's a district decision. They don't ask me about testing. Why would they ask me about graduation? Which is why I decided today I will speak publicly because that is not how you talk to the parents of the kids who didn't have an eighth grade graduation because of the pandemic, a parent of a child who has worked extremely hard, to the parent who has invested and trusted Marion City Schools with my child's education. So you can of course imagine, as I read the strategic planning priorities, I would be frustrated when my administrator tells me my opinion is not important. I believe it very much is. So first of all, this community is a church community. There are many kids that attend church on Sundays. My child was supposed to be honored at our church service. They are investing a $3,000 scholarship to my child. He was supposed to stand in front of that congregation that has invested in my child's life and be rewarded with a ceremony. But that is now not even an option if you'd like to make it to graduation. That's extremely frustrating. I know that I can have a 2:00 concert and some churches in Marion will struggle to get kids out of their church services to a concert that begins at 2:00. I feel the decision was very out of touch with our community and our families. Church matters to a lot of people. And when I said that, being told that I can just go to an earlier service, that is not an option at my church, or that I could just miss, well, I guess my child can just miss that moment in his life that was important to me as his mom and important to our congregation as the people that invested in his faith and are investing in his future. Second, the rain plan. I am not unaccustomed to that gymnasium and holding thousands of people. I am so frustrated, I cannot even express it. Chris just pointed out the fire code situation. You will have taken up a lot of hundreds of seats by the time you even start planning for spectators. So when you start limiting seats in this fashion, I question, why is that in the best interest of a child? Because I know my child wants to be surrounded by their family on that moment. I don't want to watch from a camera. Now, I'll be fortunate enough, I will be working, I'll be directing. But what about the rest of my family who want to watch my son's reactions? That camera can't capture just my son. I can't watch from a camera or a live feed my child's reaction to maybe the senior speech, his friends that are up there, the moments where he's walking around before he throws his cap and gown, or excuse me, his cap. We are taking away from kids. We are taking away from our families that have invested. The overflow, a couple things. First of all, the ADA compliance. The balcony has no elevator, so that will not help take away handicap seating. The floor space, our graduations in the past have excessive amounts of handicap needs on the floors. What about those people that can't walk up the bleachers? I have a big butt. My butt's not going to fit in one of those indents. So the fire code capacity is not going to be accurate. And how are you going to limit that? And how will you handle the raw emotion at the door? There are so many doors down there. I'm going to tell you, all it will take is one person getting in without going through the proper process and you're going to have emotions flaring in that ceremony. And rightfully so. Also, I would hope that if overflow is in the cafeteria, we put down chairs and not make them sit on those little circles on the tables. I would hope that we would try to resurrect, like resurrect this decision that was made without parental input. Didn't have to be mine. But I think if anybody would have asked any parent, would you rather have a pleasing aesthetic or watch your child graduate? Every single time, I would have said, make the investment in the Coliseum. I don't care what color of brown it shows. But I have had my choir sing through a fight at graduation. I have seen the raw emotions that come with that momentous occasion. We did not do a very good job planning. And quite honestly, if as a parent, after 13 years, doesn't have a right to say something to a building administrator and say, do you want me to patronize you as a parent? I could put out a survey, but I don't, I won't listen to it. I'm a parent. I may be an employee, but I don't like being talked to as an employee that way. As my child's mom, when I sent him through those doors on his first day of kindergarten at McKinley Elementary, I looked forward to this day. And now I dread the thought of weather. And that is unfair to do to all of us who have invested and trusted Marion City Schools with our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda confirmation, item seven. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? I think I'll make a motion to add a little time to talk about what we just heard somewhere on this agenda, probably at the end.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Well, we have time for discussion when we add it to the agenda?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll save mine for that.
Okay.
Because I do have comments, but I'll save it for when we add it to the agenda.
Okay. If it passes, yeah. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Item B would be to then, with that addition, approve the agenda. Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Sorry, it's not. All right. Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Item eight, old business. Item 8, old business. We haven't listed, so we'll move on to item 9, new business resolution. Item A under 9A is resolution for the Grant Middle School gym floor, Madam Superintendent.
So we have been talking about this for quite some time, but you have a resolution there for us to do a full replacement on the Grant gym floor from the week that occurred, and that is to not exceed the cost of $124,730. That includes the replacement of the floor and the basketball and volleyball lines.
And we had said before that this gym floor was the original, correct? Like this is pretty much, almost reached the end of its lifespan anyways, correct?
It was 1950 something.
Now, the $124,730 is to replace the whole floor. As you're saying, the lines. Are we getting any of the money back from insurance, or this is the part that insurance isn't covering?
This is the total cost.
Total cost of the floor minus if we get any insurance.
Yeah, if insurance gets us further down, then they're saying at max, we'll pay $124,730.
Yeah.
So right now, we're still working with the insurance company, but we're guaranteed $78,000.
Of the $124?
Yeah, so the total cost is like $55,000.
Okay, so just so we're clear and everybody knows, we're replacing the Grant Gymnasium floor in the main gym, Old Harding High School. And the total project cost is $124,730.
Correct.
And I believe prior, you had told us, or maybe Mr. Kearns had said, we can't sand it down anymore and refinish it anymore. It's pretty much past its life anyway.
So I talked with one company that I dealt with for about 20 years, and another company the insurance company hired. The insurance company guy said, yeah, they can do it again, they can sand it. My guy said, I would not put my name behind sanding.
And your referral that's telling you not to do that is one that has sanded for us for many years?
Yeah. And my previous district has that as well.
Correct. So you have a relationship with him, and you trust what he's telling you, that he wouldn't guarantee that floor any further?
Right. No, he would not. They do a lot of NCAA floors.
Yep. So the total is $124,730 minus, we're getting at least 78, and we're working with our attorneys to try to press that number a little higher. Okay. Thank you for clarifying all that. I'll make a motion to pass this resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the board, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wybling?
Yes.
Ms. Swongar?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 9B, resolution for Harding High School asphalt replacement, Madam Superintendent.
This is for a planned replacement for the asphalt at Harding. It's failing, or, you know, through the parking lot due to the age, it's over 20 years old, and it's beyond anything other than a replacement. So the project will replace sidewalks to the athletics activity entrance that are also failing, and the sidewalk and curbs along the student parking lot and bus parking lot.
Is that on this half of the bill, which would be the...
Northeast corner?
Yeah. Right?
Yes. And it is fixing the path into the entrance to the school, too.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the board, please.
Mr. Wybling?
Yes.
Ms. Swongar?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 9C, resolution for the purchase of a district truck, Madam Superintendent.
This is for the purchase of a large truck that will pull the music band trailer. So from the history of what I could gather by talking to different people about what has happened in the past, we were pulling the trailer, but not with the appropriate truck. So that, I think it came up, like, the reason why we stopped having people drive was because the transmission kept going out, those types of things. So Jake has done some research, and really that, the truck that they were using was not appropriate to pull. So this truck will give us the appropriateness to pull that trailer, but we'll also use it to move things across the district when it's not used by a band of music.
I'll be happy to make this motion to approve.
Happy to second. Sorry, third.
Any discussion?
Again, just happy to be able to do this. I know the department has had to fend for itself for quite a while, and I know the fundraising they do, so very much appreciate, and happy that they're going to get this, because I know they need it. And it's also going to be used when the music department isn't using it for landscaping, groundskeeping, all that other stuff, too. So multi-purpose truck, but...
Any further discussion? Call the board, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wybling?
Yes.
Ms. Swongar?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carries for the purchase of the truck. 9D, resolution for student and staff Chromebooks, Madam Superintendent.
This is for the purchase of 500 staff Chromebooks and 800 student Chromebooks as a part of our plan to keep a one-to-one program in Marion City Schools. As you may or may not know, Chromebooks do have an expiration date on them, so we have a plan to buy enough for a couple of grade levels each year to keep up with the Chromebooks expiring and the damaged ones. And for the staff Chromebooks, we bought everyone a new one about five years ago, and they need to be updated, and we can still recycle and use the old staff Chromebooks. But that's our, we want to keep on our current rotation plan, replacing Chromebooks every five years.
Do I have a motion?
I will make this motion.
I will second it.
Any discussion? Call the board, please.
Ms. Swongar?
Yes.
Mr. Wybling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 10, new business. Item 10A is MEA/MOU Speech Language Pathologists. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. This is a memorandum of understanding between MCS and MEA. We have several of our speech language pathologists that have been going over caseload or getting near going over caseload. So we came up with the MOU to outline how they will be paid when they reach, when they go over their caseload.
What is a caseload? What's the number on that?
Is it 85 on here? 80.
80. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the board, please.
Ms. Swongar?
Yes.
Mr. Wybling?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Item 10B, Ohio Means Jobs Summer Employment of Students Ages 14 through 18, Madam Superintendent.
This is an approval of a worksite agreement. We have had partnership with Ohio Means Jobs in the past. This is the agency that helps us place our students ages 14 to 18 with summer work. So we do this agreement annually, and we have had positive experience with this organization. And I've shared with a couple of you that this, I think, saved a lot of our kids over the summer. They have a safe place to go and were able to get jobs. I know that some people were even working here within Marion City. So I do think it's a valuable program for our students.
Do we know how many approximately get employment?
I don't know. Do you know off the top of your head? We have the list, I mean, we can...
Is it like five, or is it like 30, 40?
It's not a lot.
I don't know for sure.
Not a lot.
I've got a follow-up to that, too.
I can't speak for food service. I know food service was using a few as well, but for custodial, they would come in and help. We'd have about two to three per building. Not every building would want them, but we would have probably eight to 10, just for custodial staff.
Okay. I appreciate that.
And I believe they've helped in technology, too. Is that correct? So, B. Okay.
But did they help kids get jobs out in the community as well? Are they with local businesses, too, or is it just with Marion City?
I can't, no, they go, there's other sites, because they just got... They need the application signed, like, by May 15th, so they can place their students, because there's a lot of...
Okay, great.
Is that what Goodwill, our partnership with them?
The job coaches? It's similar. It's not the same.
There's job coaches, and that's, they report into the buildings and check...
Oh, okay, okay.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve. I second. Any further discussion? Call the board, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swongar?
Yes.
Mr. Wybling?
Yes.
Item 11, new business agreements and contracts. 11A, Meta Solutions, Madam Superintendent.
This contract is really several of the software systems that we use to operate across the district. They happen to be several of them that we use through Meta. We use our fiscal e-finance program, and our student information system is Power School, which you guys have probably heard of, heard us talk about. EMIS is our way that we do our state recording. We have the Info Ohio, that's our library services. It gives us access to all of those library services across Ohio. The IUP Anywhere program is the software program where we house all of our IUP documents for each student, meetings, IUP's evaluations. And then the purchasing co-op membership allows us to purchase things at discounted rates because we're members, so we purchase the vehicle. I think, what have we done, electric? So it's kind of like a Costco membership, fan club, get a discount because you're a member. Otherwise, we would have to go out and do our own bids and get our own prices, and a lot of times, they have actually had a much better price, and it saves us, saves us some funding.
Lots of time.
And time.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Call the board, please.
Ms. Swongar?
Yes.
Mr. Wybling?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 12, executive session. Is there a need to do executive session?
We don't need to go before this, at the end, yes.
Okay. Moving on to item 13, amendments to the consent agenda. That would be items 14A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L... And M. I guess my only question is, on the summer professional work, I know these are a bunch of teachers. What is that?
Most of it is for the math professional development, but remember, we have people complete applications if they wanted to do summer PD. So these are the teachers who have applied, but I believe a big chunk of them is math and PD.
Okay. And then, do you, because this has it down hourly, do we know how long that is?
How?
How many hours?
I don't have that, but we do, I mean, I can put it in the update, I don't know how many hours. So I do know that we got a grant through the ESC that is also going to allow us to do some PD that we just got, I think, last week, that just came through, but it's specifically for math PD. So that'll come from that grant.
I got you. Because I noticed that, I mean, there's a lot of them, there's a lot of people on that list, so it's like, that adds up quick if we're doing 40 hours.
And much of it will come out of federal grants.
I'm just saying, if we're doing like a day or two days, it's one thing, you start doing a week, two weeks, and then it becomes quite expensive.
But we are adding more summer programming, too, right?
Yeah, but this was just under the learning.
The PD.
Professional learning, so I was just asking about that section.
And I'll go on the record again to say that if a teacher is going to work on their vacation, they deserve to get paid for it. Because nobody else works during their vacation without getting paid.
Well, I worked during mine all the time, and I would get necessarily paid. I wasn't really asking about, I was, I guess the question was, obviously, I have no problem paying them, how many hours are we doing? Because if it's, like I said, there, too, it's not that big of a deal. We start stretching it out, you know, weeks, and it becomes hundreds of thousands of dollars, because 96 listed just in that section, that's what I was asking.
Do you mind if we move M to executive session? Chris, now.
So motion, that will be, M will be taken out. I have to request a Ms. Dyer, M is, will be dealt with later. So all items, 14A through, what's the last item?
A through L?
L.
Right.
No one else has that item or the name?
A through L, did you say?
Yeah, A through A.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you can do the alphabet backwards.
Yes. I can. So, motion to approve 14A through L, I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Can I just make a note? We had one resignation that came through today.
Okay.
That I added. She's at the very bottom, Sedona Sorowski. So I just, that was not on the agenda when we sent the draft on Friday.
Okay.
It's not on here?
It's on here for today, we added it today.
So that was a resignation?
Yes, resignation, she's the very last one.
Gotcha.
I just want you to be aware, we did add that name today.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Does that change anybody?
Nope.
Can you call the board, please?
Ms. Swongar?
Yes.
Mr. Wybling?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. So moving on to item 15, which would be the item that was removed. Do you want to do that at the end, Ms. Dyer? For the meeting?
Yeah.
So we'll move that to the end. 16 board announcements.
No, I'm sorry, are we going to talk about it in executive session?
Executive session. So let us move it to the end, so we can talk about it. Okay. Future board meetings, we have listed on there. 17, anybody have a committee report that they'd like to share? Item 18, information and discussion items. We have none. 19, we have the final reading and approval of board policies. Policy number 1432, sick leave for administration. Policy 3432, sick leave for professional staff. Policy number 4432, sick leave classified staff. And policy 8120.09, volunteers, which we're rescinding that policy because we have it somewhere else.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ratliff.
Yes.
I did have something for information and discussion items, and I'm sorry it was late today, but did we do a moment of silence for...
Yes, we did.
Okay, so I missed that.
For two.
Okay. And the other thing that I wanted to say was a shout-out to the art show yesterday here at Harding. I do like those artists of the week and the teachers that came in on a Sunday to man that, and I was very pleased with community engagement. So I like us using our facility to do that. I remember back in the day when we had to go to Safeline Mall and do that, but I felt like a real sense of community out here.
I think that's the goal of the board, to use more of our buildings for the community activities. Obviously, as taxpayers, they, they pay for them, and it doesn't cost us much to allow them to use.
And I think they had a, it was very confusing, though, because of the signs, and I didn't even know that the doors had numbers above them, because I came in like this way, and it said, "Go to door 18" and, and those type, because I think we had multiple things going on at the same time. I think we also had like a choir concert or whatever, so it was kind of confusing, but it was good. I like it when we have to fight for parking space in our parking lot. So that's all for me.
Back to item 19.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, you're fine. Back to item 19, the policy readings and approval of the four policies that we have listed there. Did we get a motion?
Sooner.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion about the four policies? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weibling?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. I guess the next item will be?
Graduation.
The graduation item that we moved for discussion, based upon what we heard from the public. Anybody want to care to start?
I will.
Go ahead, Ms. Swanger.
So in, in terms of educational continuity, I mean, number one, graduation has been on a Sunday for, since I can remember, at least 1979, when my oldest brother graduated, 1979. And we had 79, 80, 81, and then we had 86 and 89. So five Swanger children all graduated on a Sunday afternoon, either 2 o'clock or 3 o'clock, but it was always, was going to be at the football stadium, and then if the weather was bad, it would go to the Coliseum. And then, having graduated through here, and then having come back and taught for 27 years in Marion City Schools, graduation has always been on a Sunday in the afternoon with the same parameters that it was at the football stadium and then Coliseum. Then at one point, we actually said, hey, there's too much contingency there for weather, so then it was just moved to the Coliseum, and it was always at the Coliseum. Rain or shine, it's at the Coliseum, nobody has to make a decision, nobody has any issues, it's at the Coliseum. So for us to, A, say the Coliseum is now too expensive, and I don't know, I mean, I saw the financial reports, if we're talking about $3,000 and we're not going to allow all kids to sit in one area and all families to sit in one area for $3,000, that's a cost of doing business. And graduation for these kids, for a lot of these kids, this is the only graduation they will ever have. This is the only ceremony that they will walk through. They are going to graduate from high school, which is a huge accomplishment for them, and they will not be going to college, they will not be doing anything else. So to now say, if it rains, we now are going to bring it back to Harding High School instead of the Coliseum. Number one, we're limiting seating. You want to talk about not finding a parking spot because we did have a choir concert, which was amazing yesterday, and we had an art show. If we fill our parking lots at Harding High School for those, what do you think we're going to have for graduation? We are not going to be able to fit every car in this parking lot if we have to do that for graduation. We're going to separate families, people are going to be irritated because they can't park and they can't walk to where they need to go. So that's just one issue. My other big issue is noon. And again, we do have a group of people in this community who go to church. I, for one, work at a church. I work on Sunday mornings. So for me to do my job and then get either to Harding High School, and I'm going to call it the Harding Stadium, I'm not going to call it the Grant Stadium, I'm going to call it the Harding Stadium, to get there or to get here after I do my job, I'm not going to have a place to park. I have a contingency plan right now, and I already talked to you about this, I said, I am going to ride my bike to work so that I can then ride my bicycle to wherever I need to go, because I know that I am not going to find a place to park. So the fact that we moved this without talking to any stakeholders, and we just verbatim said, we're now going to do this at noon because, oh gosh, that sounds like a good time, it won't be as warm, kids will have longer for their graduation parties. I mean, it's still going to go till 2:00, when it's going to be the heat of the day. So I don't understand how that saves anything, but the fact that we are not consulting stakeholders and we are making a decision that is changing a tradition that has been here and a prior precedent since at least 1979, I find incredulous.
The only thing I would add to that, because pretty much everything was said that I was thinking, Plan A, to me, is an A+. You have a historic building in terms of the, the stadium itself with the new turf. If it's a sunny day with a cool breeze, it's perfect. If Plan A is an A+, but your Plan B is a D at best, then I think we haven't planned well enough, because we're, the cost benefit analysis in terms of if it does rain, what if it rains for the next three years and this was the plan? You know, that's, there's too much at stake based on the weather in Ohio in mid-May. I think people forget, we've had snow flurries for three straight Mayes, three years in a row, it has snowed in mid-May. Not accumulation on the ground, but it has been darn cold enough for flurries, so I just, that's my two cents.
I guess for me, how did we go from 12, 2 to 12? And when did we go from 2 to 12?
The team at Harding High School, which included the admin, myself, and the school counselors, we were talking about the things that happened last year, graduation, and we actually looked at several times, we looked at 10, 12, and even 7 o'clock, and that's what they decided was best. I know there were several reasons for the 12 o'clock time, that, you know, kids could get done earlier, to go have their graduation parties, that was some of the feedback from last year. Also, trying to get in a little bit earlier, I know that last year, and that is like the hottest part of the day, so we also had issues last year with people and medical, needing medical attention. So that was part of the reason to move to 12 o'clock time.
When was that? I guess, when did this happen? Because I started getting calls this week, and one presented to me that anything was moving.
I found out when I was on vacation. So the 14th through the 21st. So somewhere in there, I found out, and I was like, you've got to be kidding.
I just know that I have invites hanging at our home that say 2:00 PM at Harding Stadium, that now those families have to communicate that it's not at 2:00 PM, it's at noon. And for something like this to happen, this close to the graduation date, seems to me like, you know, a little rushed. And I think decisions were made that didn't include, you know, all these conversations that we're having now, and quite frankly, if this is the reaction now, you know, what was, there was nothing wrong with the 2, 2 o'clock timeframe, you know? There, you know, it allows people to get to church, allows people to do the things that they normally do and had planned to do months ago when they started sending these invitations out. So it just kind of baffles me that we make these decisions now.
But I'm just at a loss at how the board were not, was not informed that graduation times were being changed and locations, historic locations. And I, you know, my heart goes out to parents, I don't, you know, I'd have went off probably at that microphone had my child's graduation went from 2 to noon, I got, I got stuff out, as Mr. Guyer is saying, and if it rains, I hope it does not rain. Because whoever made that decision to just have it at Harding High School has never been to a Marion City School graduation, because you will have overflow upon overflow, potentially you will have semi-rioting, because people are going to be highly upset if they can't see their kid graduate life. I mean, highly upset. So I don't know who came up with this plan, but it is a terrible plan at best. He gives it a D, it flat out fails for me. I don't, I don't know, and I, I would be assuming that we didn't get our fee in on time. Something else got scheduled, and that's why Plan B is here and not at the Coliseum. It'll be the first time ever that this is going to be attempted, if it happens, I, I hope, and, and, you know, if we pray for good weather, because Plan B is, is a terrible plan. I don't, I don't know who's making the shots with this stuff, the calls, but this is not good at all. And I fielded several calls this week about it, and I didn't even know which is even worse for me, that I'm calling and parents are, are basically upset, and I, I don't even know the time was changed, let alone the potential location. And then we have people speaking that feel almost semi-disrespected, I guess, or disrespected, to put it bluntly, when they're asking questions. I don't know how the Marion City School District graduation is being handled like this. It's, it's just pitiful, really.
So how do you feel about the other, that's not the only change. There, we're not distributing diplomas, I mean, so I, I mean, so what I'm saying is, the team, when they got together, they must have looked at several aspects of graduation.
Well, I think, to your point, I think the team has improved graduation, from my perspective. I think I've asked for several years that teachers, staff, doesn't have to be teachers, could be any staff, bus drivers or whoever, if a kid felt that that individual changed their life or had an impact in their life, that, and we've, we've sat through the graduation ceremony, given diplomas, we don't have that individual impact that maybe that person
They don't even know us sometimes.
So I think, I think that was a extremely great improvement on the ceremony. I'm just worried about the position of the ceremony, and like I said, if everything goes right with weather, we won't even have the discussion, it'll be.
Minus time. But what other, what other changes that may affect tradition, other than the time, the Plan B, and who distributes the diplomas? Are those the three major changes for graduation?
I plan on one graduation, so those are the changes I know from last year. And I would just ask that if any of you have received complaints from parents, as part of our board communication, you're supposed to forward those to the superintendent, so that I can address those. So if you have complaints from parents that are standing out there, I would ask that you please forward those to me, so that I can address them.
And I, I'm not opposed to change. If anybody knows me and my educational philosophy, I change all the time. I think the change in terms of allowing a teacher or somebody significant in that child's life to hand them a diploma is, I love that. I mean, we've talked about that for years, and we were always told it was a logistical nightmare and it couldn't be done. Well, it's done in other schools, so it can be done. So I applaud that decision. I just think that the other two of the three.
Right, but that wasn't my point. My point was, while we're talking about changes to the actual tradition, and there was a time when Harding did graduate on a Saturday at 11:00, so, but it was at the Coliseum, and it wasn't on a church day. So my point is, and I have a granddaughter graduating, and I'm a faith-based person as well, and it is going to be hard parking and logistics. I would just ask that there are things in, in our life in Marion City Schools that you just don't touch, and graduation is like one of those things, because people know, I mean, you could set your watch by, you know, graduation time, where it's going to be, I mean, you don't even have to have a kid graduating, you know that it's going to be after church, so that the baccalaureate services and those type. I think Mrs. Rollins mentioned that her child was going to be honored, those times are sacred to a lot of people. So, I mean, I would just ask that things, and, and a lot of people aren't community, like a lot of people on this board and stuff, so there are just certain things that you just don't touch in Marion City Schools, and that's one of them. So that was my point, was to go ahead and let's talk about any other changes that are occurring, so that we can gut it out like right now, I mean, because this is a gut punch. It truly is.
You know, we're 17 days out.
Is, is that, I mean, the Coliseum is booked, for sure?
Oh, I don't know.
No idea.
I think.
Can we reach out tomorrow, please, and find out if it's booked?
Was it too late to change things?
In my opinion, is it too late to change things? Absolutely not. I mean, we can change things, we have social media, we have telephones, we have more ways to communicate today than we have ever had in our lifetime. If we cannot communicate the heck out of this, then that's on us. It is not too late. You say, today's the, what, the 29th? We still, and graduation's on the 19th? We still have 20 days. That's almost three weeks. If we can't communicate that out in three weeks, then something's wrong with us.
I think we're, I think it's.
Well, who said it was already booked? Somebody, one of the parents?
They, they said there might be an event, that's why I was asking, do we know for sure if there's an event?
I don't have, I don't have a, do we know anybody?
But I think it's the boards. What I'm understanding, the board at all, is the Plan B should be at the Coliseum. Anybody disagree with that? So hopefully, we can call and see if it's.
I wouldn't mind changing the time either. We're going to change it, let's change it back to tradition. So Superintendent DeLaFlore, is it possible to research that?
Or no? Need a research?
Huh?
What do you want, need a research?
The availability of the Coliseum for graduation at 2 o'clock?
You're asking to change the time?
Yeah, I mean, we may, if we're going to change, we may as well change everything, cut the gotta work. You know?
I'm not the only one. I mean, I am one of many people.
I know, but I'm just saying, I just said that euphemistically.
I mean, in terms of faith, in terms of faith-based, it puts a struggle on anybody who wants to attend church and also attend graduation.
But we also know the separation between church and state, we, we realize that, but in consideration to a lot of different things. If we're going to change something, we may as well change it back to tradition.
That looks like Mr. Guyer has pulled up the Coliseum's availability, potentially his.
If the website's correct.
Yeah, potentially, so.
Still potentially.
Yep.
Is there a problem changing it back, Madam Superintendent, to, as Ms. Dyer is pointing out?
I would have to talk to the team here at Harding, unless you're just making a decision as a board. But I'm not comfortable with, with them having gone through all of it to this change, but if you all women.
Well, I mean, I don't.
I would want to have a conversation with the team.
I guess I'm, I'm at a loss why you would have trouble with telling the team, the board moved it back to the original date, because you didn't have a problem telling the team, we'll move it to 12, even though we haven't consulted the board. See, I don't, I don't understand the problem. I don't think the graduation team is running the district's graduation without board approval. If they are, that, then we might need a policy on that, because I, I don't understand why we're messing with this stuff. It, it baffles me when stuff isn't broken, that we continually try to break it, so we can see how many people we can upset. This goes back to the, the building, you know, goes back to charging to use our buildings, this goes back to locking teachers out. I don't understand where we're coming up with stuff. But this is not a good move by any means. And I highly suggest that we need to see if the Coliseum's open, move this gradu, I'll just make a motion to move the graduation to 2:00 PM.
Well.
With, if the Coliseum's open, to have Plan B be at the Coliseum. That's my motion.
But what about before we make that motion? What about the time? So if the time, to me, time is a factor as well, so if we're amended and stuff, but I, I understand where you're coming from, Superintendent DeLaFlore, with your team, you know, having made this decision, and it's a team-type decision, so you want to go back to the team. But if, if that is the motion, you. But if, if that is the motion, you, can you amend it to even suggest that we do time?
I, it is. My motion is double. Plan B is at the Coliseum at 2:00 PM. The graduations that I think should be at 2:00 PM, no matter what, people haven't out on the invitations. I don't know what to tell the people. But now are being told 12. But I think it should go back to two. I think for all the reasons that have been stated here tonight.
On the, on the original district calendar, was the time for graduation at two o'clock?
When is the original, I don't know what you're talking about.
From the last, the calendar, the district calendar?
Yes, it was. It was at one time. Yes, it was at two o'clock.
So, so originally it was at two o'clock on FMX. So then it was changed from that.
To 12.
To 12. Just go back to the original, what the original calendar stated.
Which would have been board approved, correct?
The board didn't approve the time.
Okay, that, that's why I was asking, was it on there?
That was when it was that blank kind of a thing and I asked that people.
Yeah, that was more of a question than it was a statement.
So my motion, I guess, to clarify, graduation's at 2:00 PM. Plan B is the Coliseum.
If it's available.
If available.
And, well, I'll voice what, I wanted to go back there. But, um, if it's, your motion is second, I'll wait till discussion to discuss what I.
I'll second it just so we can move to the discussion. That's fine. Second.
Okay. So I was, um, so I'm always hesitant to, um, unless it's like a superintendent kind of, uh, recommendation and stuff. And, and so is there a way that we can kind of like have it both ways? Like the superintendent says she wants to talk about, talk about this with her team or whatever. And I, I do want to give her that respect to, to do that. Um, so how, how can we compromise and do that? Like get the feedback from the team?
I'm not really looking for a compromise or for feedback from the team. Uh, we're the Board of Education, so I'm trying to make a decision because we're 17 days out. One, we have to figure if the, if we want, uh, that to be Plan B, we better have it booked. Real quick so we're could get out that that is the new Plan B or go back to the old Plan B. And then if we're going to have it be two, we need to say it's back to two. And it needs to be put out with urgency.
And if the Coliseum is available, I don't like it sitting out there available. Like the assumption might be, well, Harding's already taken it, you know, so, but they, somebody might, ooh, we've got access to the Coliseum. We didn't think that was an option. I, I wouldn't.
They probably thought that Harding was going to take it.
And realistically, if we look at this, and I understand that there's a team that does graduation, but I also understand the new people that are on the team. And so some of the new people who are on the team do not have the, the grounded roots within Marion to understand that this longstanding tradition has been there. And so they can make decisions without knowing what that prior precedent is and what that history is. So. I'm, I'm for changing it. I'm for changing it and, and changing it in the sense that we're taking it back to tradition and what it always has been. And what Marion understands and what Marion is used to.
Now, whether we, whether we vote to change the time, I mean, there's no way that should, if the Coliseum's available, spending money to make that Plan B. It's a, there's more seats, more floor space for the events, more parking than what we have. I don't know if, you know.
It's handicap accessible.
Yeah, I mean, that facility.
It checks all the boxes.
I mean, there's just.
Which is why we've done it in the past because it checks all the boxes and it allows for everyone.
Some of those kids have a lot of people that are in attendance. You know, their whole extended family comes.
And I'm going to tell you right now, I can't imagine an air horn in the, in the gymnasium.
Cause there's going to be one.
Yeah, you can't regulate this.
There will be air horns and if it's in the gymnasium, I'm not sure my ears can take that. It's sad. There will be.
Any further discussion? Call the roll.
So tell us again, what, what is the, what is, what is your?
Move the time back to 2:00 PM and if the Coliseum's available, that is Plan B.
As opposed to the gym and overflow.
The time is always going to be 2:00 PM, right?
By end of the future, we can have further discussions. I'm just saying for this year, it's got to be 2:00 PM.
And considering too, that there is going to be a whole bunch of parents who have probably sent out, you know, hundreds and hundreds of invitations and, um.
Well, we have it the other way as well.
And hundreds and hundreds of parents have already probably said, hey, the graduation party starts at two, you know, and they probably have a rental space, maybe, you know? Not that my granddaughter does, but they probably have a rental space that has.
I think the rental spaces, if, like if you were renting a space, I'm going to assume that was done when you thought it was at two o'clock. Because that's what's been on the district calendar, FMX, for a long time.
Well, not really because, but my circle saw the 12 o'clock and they rented according to that 12 o'clock time. As far as graduation was concerned. And then people usually rent a rental space for X amount of hours, you know, from, um, two to six. Or from whatever to whatever, you know what I mean? So, and it's paid and deposits. I'm saying, yeah, we're passionate about this and everything, but, you know, we can have people come in next week who say, at our next board meeting and say, you changed graduation and I had a limo and a limo driver and it cost me X amount of dollars, is what I'm saying. I'm just saying be prepared for that as well. So I like it at two o'clock. I'm a traditionalist, but I'm, you know, I like it at two, um, on Sunday. But, um, I hesitate to, I understand what our superintendent is saying. I hesitate to not give her, um, opportunity to, um, do what she needs to do in order to talk to staff or the team or whatever.
Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Weibling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Motion carries. I think the next item on the agenda, well, first of all, Ms. Dyer, it's your birthday. Happy birthday.
Oh, happy birthday.
Where's my presents?
I think the last on the, on the, uh, the list would be the executive session that you called for.
I did call for it.
On exhibit, on, uh.
Oh, yeah, I thought we were going anyway.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah. So we'll, there will be action after, correct?
No.
So if anyone wants to stick around, there'll be action after.
You guys are going to have to vote on M after.
Yes.
We'll vote on that. Okay, which was pulled off.
Okay. Motion to go in executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weibling?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer? Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
That's. Now 9:18, we're out of executive session. And the item remaining on the agenda is 14M. The termination of employment of two individuals. I have a motion to accept that termination. So my.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Weibling?
Yes.
Dyer?
Guyer.
Dyer, sorry. I'm just doing the last name. Sorry, I'm really kind. Guyer?
Yes.
Swanger?
Yes.
Ratliff?
Yes. Motion to adjourn. I will present the motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion in the lobby, should you? Call the roll.
Ratliff?
Yes.
Weibling?
Yes.
Swanger?
Yes.
Guyer?
Yes.
Dyer?
Happy birthday, Tara.
All right, thanks.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Ms. Dyer.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
As your person, I'm not speaking.